Under its decision, Planning Commission members with a personal or financial interest in any petitioner's requests are required to recuse themselves. If a motion to deny a request is made, a reason must be given. Members of the Planning Commission are Frank Cook, Reggie Dunn, Buddy Hardwick, Cruz Reeves, James Reed, Garrett Smith, and members of the land use staff are Warren Adams, Tanya Ingram, Javon Hines, Carol Ann Pinkston. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the March 28, 2024 meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? It's approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would request that before we get started tonight, Robert, since so much has been passed around about this memo and this thing that came out from about the ordinance for site plans, okay, I know I didn't completely understand and I was going to ask our attorney and I was going to ask Adam if y'all would or somebody, explain to us the difference in what this is, because we used to do the site plans, is what I, I mean the development plans, I'm sorry. I know we used to do them, but I want to make sure that everybody here understands so that when it comes up, because where I'm, when I read this, what I've read is that, that yeah, we'll have a, we'll have a, a hearing or meeting, but in that meeting, it really doesn't matter what you say or do. The city's already made up their mind, that's what it's going to be. Now y'all help me get us, get us where we're supposed to be. And I read that for everything except, meaning everything except.
Yes, sir. Robert Smith, City Planning Director here at the City of Montgomery. So, yes, sir, you have interpreted it correctly. That was an action that you all used to have in the past and of course that was repealed and now it's actually been put back in place just purely for the purpose of holding a public hearing in addition to what was actually being done before that, which was a sign that was being placed out on any particular site where a site development plan was in process. I think it said something to the effect of site under development or review or something like that, but it was decided internally that more needed to be done to allow people to at least get a presentation on what was actually, what is being developed on any particular site where a site development plan has been submitted to the city by the petitioner or the petitioner's representative, whether that be architect or engineer or whoever it is, just so people know, and it's been publicly said in y'all's meeting, what's actually being proposed. But it's not anything you get to vote on, but you, you just entertain a public hearing or as it says in the, in the ordinance meeting.
But in essence, it really doesn't matter what anybody says, it's already a done deal. Or if y'all.
Yes, sir.
Decided that you were against it, it's already a canceled deal.
Correct. It's purely an administrative function of the city between city departments, whether that's city planning and zoning, engineering, traffic engineering, urban forestry, all of the internal departments actually review those site development plans and decide administratively to approve them.
So we can hold.
So long as the zoning is proper and correct.
So we can use what we always say that we're, that we're going to allow 10 minutes for the people for and the people against, and we never have stuck to the 10 minutes because some, you know, you want people to be able to talk. But since it doesn't really matter what anybody says in here on them, we could do the, we could keep the 10 minutes in place and, and just let, let the chairman say, well, it's 5:06, so at 5:16, you know, you're through.
Correct.
Go.
Right. And whether it's five minutes, three minutes, or 10 minutes.
Doesn't matter.
I mean, you're basically, this is a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak for or against this or speak about it, please come forward and that will be it.
And talk fast.
As fast as they want to talk.
Okay, now let me, let me make sure of this, y'all, before I quit. This has nothing to do with planning or rezoning.
Correct. Site development plans.
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed associated with subdivision plots or rezonings.
All right, but what, y'all will take like a plat, when I say y'all, I'm talking about the staff, okay?
Correct.
Y'all, y'all will take that plat and you will say in there whether you recommend it or whether you do not.
Correct.
Okay, but even with the input from, from people in the audience that think they really have, have a true input to make a change, at the end of the day, or at the end of 30 days, is that what it is? Y'all gonna sign off on it anyway if, if, if the staff says to do it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
That's correct.
So we've spent a lot of time in the past, having a lot of comments and letting a lot of people talk, and at the end of the day, it really doesn't matter what they say or what we say.
Correct.
Even though we take a vote on the, on a plat, we could sit here and talk all night on that plat and take a vote, you know, and it's, we're still back. If we vote against it and the staff has voted for it, then it's going to go into place.
Correct.
Okay.
Unless there's some, when you say plat, subdivision plats, unless there is some, something wrong with it or incorrect, then outside of that.
But it shouldn't be in front of us if it is.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Generally, if it's in front of you, it's been, it has been checked for compliance and what is being presented to you is something that is in compliance with the subdivision regulations.
So we really don't need to waste people's time when what they've got to say does not apply?
On site development plans?
On site and, and on rezoning.
No, so only, so only on site.
On plants, I'm sorry, on plants.
Site development plans, it's just, it's a public hearing only.
Yeah.
Not anything that you.
But we're going to vote on the others, but you just got through saying that if they get here, a plat gets in front of us and it says on there that, that the staff recommends this.
Yes.
Then in 30 days, no matter what we do or say in this meeting, it's going to be, it's going to be approved.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Aren't we back to the kind of the same thing?
Well, I mean, you haven't changed anything associated with subdivision plats or rezonings. The only thing that has changed is that the site development plans are being brought back before you.
But what changes is, is if, if the individuals have the right to speak, which I think they should.
Correct. Yes, sir.
We have always relied on that and we've always gone over the 10-minute rule, but yet you're also telling me that, and I'll use an example of, because there, the Planning Commission, let me see, the very, well, let's see, the first one that we've got tonight is, is, is on, Decatur, well, Decatur, yeah, it would be Decatur. And these, this plat, all right, y'all did not, there is, there is no, there is nothing that says y'all agree or disagree with on that one.
Correct.
Well, what do you mean, correct? I thought you said that, that y'all either say that we're for or against it.
So on the, on the subdivision plats, do we not have on the agenda any sort of a recommendation or anything like that? Or it's in, it's in compliance with the subdivision?
As far as a plat is concerned, you won't see it if it's not in compliance.
Yeah.
The thing is, when you guys have the opportunity to vote yea or nay for a plat, the thing is, if you vote yes, because you're looking at it and it goes with our zoning ordinance, if it didn't, you wouldn't see it.
All right.
The question, the, the thing is, when our public speaks, their opinion matters to a certain degree when it comes to plats, because you guys vote the yes or no. If you say no and that petitioner is like, oh, it meets it, then that's when we end up in court. So you can yes or no a plat, you have the ability to do that, weighed on the public's opinion. However, if our recommendation, if you're looking at it, it meets zoning. So it's up to you guys to weigh their opinion at that point. Site plans, however, there's no weight.
All right, but we also just had the conversation where on a plat.
Right.
Right. Now, if you know go, if you know go a plat.
We're kind of mixing it, we're kind of mixing it up, because you started off talking about site development plans and we got off into plats.
I've already passed that, yeah. I mean, I've got that, that people can, can, we're not going to vote on it. People can, and we can do the 10-minute rule and say, hey, yeah, you got to file.
Right, right. I mean, now, now, I will say this, if there is something that looks like an issue, staff will take it back to whoever needs to look at that and, and review it for sure.
All right, well, another example.
But again, it's pure administrative city function internal to staff that, that at the end of the day, that's the only thing that, that will get done on that. No, no voting will take place.
Okay, tonight, the first one.
Okay.
Doesn't have any recommendation, okay?
I'm sorry, it doesn't have what?
Doesn't have any for or against. The second one does, it said the plat is in compliance. Then you go back, you, the next one, it might say, and then there's a couple in there that says that, that we do not feel like this was in compliance.
Correct.
Okay? So those are ones that are already been decided.
Not necessarily. I mean, just because we, we, just because it meets it, y'all have a yes or no. If you know it.
But if it's going to go down, back to Adam in 30, in 30 days and he's going to sign it, what difference does it make?
The 30 days only applies if there is no action. If you guys cannot decide and it meets zoning in 30 days, it will go through. If you guys deny it, then that's how we end up in court, because the petitioner feels like it, it meets it, and then that's how we get, we have to sit there. 30 days only applies if it's no action.
Well, you don't end up in court the vast majority of the time, so.
Right.
Okay, all right. I understand the rules. Is there anybody else?
Now, I want to say one.
Well, I think, I think as far as the note goes, as far as the Planning Commission note goes, they will have a note if they do not approve of it, but if there's no note saying they object to it, then that's pretty much saying it's okay as far as they're concerned.
But they say that in some and don't say it on that, that first one.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, generally speaking.
Well, let's get it consistent.
Yeah, I need, I need to look at the first one.
Chair, the, the first one does say, this plat is in compliance.
Okay, so it does, it does say that.
Yes. And two, and two says it's in compliance.
Mike, go, go to the first one on the first page.
Yeah, it is. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I just didn't have it underlined, so I could, I, I.
Okay, so yeah, so, so you, you stand corrected. The first one that says this plat is in compliance with zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations for this district.
Yeah, okay.
Typically, that's how we.
So this was a done deal, is what we're saying.
Presented, presented to you.
This is a done deal, is what we're saying.
There would be no reason for you to deny, because it's in compliance. That would be the only valid reason to deny a plat. And if you did, then that's how we end in court.
And, and unless there is some issue that, based on all of the internal reviews that you all see, that, that let's say a staffer internally didn't see, then you might have a reason to, to say no to it.
Correct.
And, and just for information, number three states this plat is not in compliance. However, the CRC approved a warrant for the lot width to be 253.
Well, I've, I've also said there's a couple on that say that they're not, so, okay.
Okay, so.
Robert. Beginning of this conversation was, Buddy was saying it's pre-approved. Is that accurate?
No.
I'm sorry, say that one more time. Who was pre-approved?
Buddy was saying it's pre-approved, but the city, it goes through the city council after we.
Well, well, hold on. So only, only rezonings go before the city council.
Right.
The subdivision plats do not. Those, those are only your action.
But is it pre-approved?
No.
No, well, I mean, and, and I guess maybe the interpretation of pre-approval is the statement that says that this plat is in compliance with the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations for this district. So you can, you can kind of interpret that as an internal staff pre-approval, because it is in compliance with it.
I just want to clear that up, because I didn't understand it was pre-approved.
Right, right. And it was, I think that was more of a play on words that Mr. Hardwick was saying, but yeah, that's, that's what that means, based on that line in the, in the remarks, that last line in the remarks section. Any more questions?
Keep on trucking, let's go.
All right, sorry about the confusion.
First item, we have the request final approval of Jim Massey plat number six, located on the west side of South Decatur Street, approximately 120 feet south of Grove Street, in a T4R, general urban restricted zoning district.
Good afternoon, I'm Steve Hughes with Jeff Good Engineers and Surveyors, and we are asking for final approval of the Jim Massey plat number six. Say that with a little trepidation after this initial conversation.
Yeah.
It was?
I said, I say that with a little trepidation after this initial conversation before the item. But we are in compliance.
You gotta know how the card games play.
Yeah.
Is there any plus, any questions from the Planning Commission, the audience? Motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? It's approved.
Second item, requesting final approval of Raphael K. Mickel plat number one, located on the southwest corner of Selma Highway and Robert C. Ham Road in an Ag 1 residential.
Once again, I'm Steve Hughes with Jeff Good Engineers and Surveyors, and we are asking for final approval of the Raphael K. Mickel plat number one.
Any questions from the Planning Commission, audience? Motion's in order?
Need to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion's approved.
Item number three, requesting final approval of Hampstead plat number 29, located on the northwest corner of Conduit Street and Broadwick Street, in a CST5 Civic Space Urban Center Zone zoning district.
Good evening, I'm Kenneth White with Flowers and Water, representing Hampstead LLC. This is just a simple plat for a proposed school in Hampstead, so we're plating that piece of property for a proposed school. I can entertain any questions?
This is a good example. This one's not.
Yeah, I can explain why.
All right.
Yeah, so the, the reason why it wasn't in compliance, because there's a width maximum in the smart code and, you know, we knew that going in, so we had to apply for a warrant.
Right.
And the warrant was approved prior to, you know, presenting this plat. Is that right, Warren?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's the only reason it's not compliant. There's, I think, a maximum width of 180 feet, I believe, in smart code, which is, but that's the only reason it's not.
So, so what you're saying is that now it is in compliance, because it was approved, the warrant was approved?
It's not in compliance, but they, with the code, but they did get a warrant. In other words, they did receive approval for that lot width that they're proposing.
With the warrant, it's, 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 you're in compliance with, are you, the, the city is now in favor of it, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it, so, so with this one, there was a slight deviation from the, from the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations that was approved by the warrant. And if you all remember, since this is a smart code zoned location, there's a special committee, similar to you all, it's called the Consolidated Review Committee, they, they review those slight deviations from the, the smart code zoning ordinance, and they actually approved that. So, so yeah, you, you're getting it after they have gotten it, and this is about as good as it can get. So there was some, some relief that was gotten from, from not being able to fully comply with the zoning, smart code zoning ordinance.
Mr. Buddy, if you see that apartment complex right there on the aerial, we had to ask for a warrant for that plat on the left, on the left side.
Yeah.
So that's very similar. That was in a T4 zone, you know, it's, it's done several times in Hampstead for any commercial building or that apartment building right there. So we always have to ask for a warrant from the CRC prior, prior to going to.
But it's not in compliance. That's what he said.
It's not a, yeah, that's why I get a warrant.
Sounds right.
Any further questions from the Planning Commission, audience?
Sure, I may be opening an egg or one. Is, what, is there a definition of slight? What's a slight deviation?
So basically, what, what they asked for?
No, my, my question is, what does slight mean?
So I guess in this, in this case.
Well, I wasn't talking about this case necessarily. What does slight mean in your interpretation of it?
Slight is a, would be a deviation from the original requirement.
I understand that, but is 50% slight?
You, you have to look at each case individually. That's how we do it. You know, obviously depends what the request is.
Who determines what slight? That's my question.
Internal staff and the Consolidated Review Committee. And just keep in mind, I think one of your members here is on the Consolidated Review Committee that reviews the, the smart code warrants. And I, and I think that is.
The chairman.
The chairman, okay. So I guess Mr. Smith would have been in on the Consolidated Review Committee when, when they voted on this one in, in particular.
Okay, you're not hearing my question. Is slight, determined each time, what is slight?
It, it is on a case-by-case basis, but there may be a specific.
So slight may be 10% in one case and maybe 25% in another case?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Cook, you know, I believe our width is about 200 and, if I can read it, about nine feet. I think 180 is the maximum. So it's 20 foot from being in compliance of the.
So that's 10, that's 10%.
Yeah, 10 to 15%.
That's, that's.
In that case. Okay, well, I, I just didn't know whether we had determined what slight was.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further questions?
No, I'm fine.
Motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion's approved.
Item number four, request final approval of North Chase plat number seven, located on the south side of North Chase Boulevard, approximately 350 feet east of Contractors Drive, in an M1 light industrial zoning district.
Good evening again, Kenneth White, Flowers and Water, Engineer, Representative Thomas Cruz. This is just a simple plat of unplatted, previously unplatted land for a, a development that we're doing right there. I believe it's in compliance, Mr. Buddy.
That's correct.
It's stamped on there, it is.
Don't start.
Is there any questions from the Planning Commission? Anything from the audience? Motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion's approved.
Item number five, requesting a waiver to the subdivision regulations and final approval of Westport Industrial Park plat number three, located at the southeast end of Westport Boulevard in an M1 light industrial zoning district.
Good afternoon or evening. My name's Mike Brown from Bradley Air Ant, and yes, we're here seeking replating of seven parcels into one parcel. The request for the waiver has to do with the survey itself and the sizing of the survey, I think, to allow the plat to be drawn at a scale of 1 inch to 200 instead of 1 inch to 100. I think that's due to the size of the survey.
This was a slight change.
It's in compliance.
Y'all are having too much fun.
You gotta have fun.
Exactly.
Is there any questions from the Planning Commission? Any questions from the audience? Motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Item number six, request final approval of Facility 1 and Facility 2 plat number two, located on the north side of Wosden Road, approximately 1,400 feet west of Mobile Highway, in an M3 general industrial zoning district.
Hey, everyone, I'm Charlie Bass with the Montgomery Chamber. I'm here on behalf of Project South and Project Tide for this replat, replating it into two lots, and then the third lot is going to be for an industrial access road.
Could you speak, the last sentence, you kind of faded a little.
Sorry about that. The third parcel is going to be for the industrial access, the access road that will serve both companies. They're deading that over to the city.
Any questions from the commission? From the audience?
Is this, is this what we did in the planning, I mean, in the industrial?
Uh, yes, this is part of it.
This is our lot?
Sorry.
This is our lot?
Yeah, yeah, for the industrial, yes.
Okay, well, I can vote then.
Motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion's approved.
I just got it with you.
I got you.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item number seven, request to rezone one lot located on the southeast corner of Moreland Road and Edgar D. Nixon Avenue, AKA 367 Moreland Road, from an R65M multifamily residential zoning district to a B2 commercial zoning district.
Yes, sir. Name and address?
Yes, on the corner of.
What's your name and address, please?
William Boyd. William Boyd.
Address?
Sir?
Address?
Address three two two West Fairview Avenue.
Thank you.
Yeah, so on the corner of three two two West Fairview and Edgar D. Nixon, I have a small used dealership there. Uh, been there, we're going on thirteen years. And adjacent in the backyard, directly in the backyard, it's property that I, that I own. And I'm trying to get that rezoned, move the car lot back there, bring economic development to a neighborhood that I have been a part of for the last thirty-five years. Uh, uh, this is my ninth business in West Montgomery that I have provided, uh, to serve that area. So all that I'm asking is for that piece of property to be rezoned. Uh, the car lot is already there. The, the interest will, would be in the same interest as the, the property that is located on three two two, uh, West Fairview Avenue.
How many times did we turn this thing down?
Uh, you never turned it down, zero.
You sure?
I'm a hundred percent positive.
What was the outcome of the last time?
There was no action. It, on, at the city council, it was, it was four out of one vote. There's a person abstaining, who's no longer in office. So I needed one vote, and that was my...
So we just had a split vote, is what you said?
It was a no, it was a no action.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Boyd, uh, did you meet with the people on Moreland Drive?
Absolutely. No one here today.
I see they aren't. I'm surprised.
Yes. But I do have some people that speak in, on, you know, that, that were willing to, uh, to see this transaction take place. So this would not affect that neighborhood none whatsoever due to the fact that, uh, we plan on getting the address changed where the, uh, transaction would, would take place on Edgar D. Nixon, that would take place on that street. I forgot the name of the street, but we put up privacy fence. The neighbor next door, who sold me the property going on two years ago, she sold me the property with the impression that she would not oppose, uh, this car lot. And she's not here. None, none of the neighbors, uh, are here. Just only four houses on the street. And my plan is to buy the, the other two houses on the street that is in, just, disapparent, that, that I'm, I plan to purchase those properties where economic development, investing in my own neighborhood, is what I'm trying to do. Been a business man for that thirty-five years there.
Did you say, did you say you had a meeting with the neighbors? Is that what you said?
Yes, the neigh, yes, they were opposition.
When, when did you have the meeting?
In passing.
When?
In passing. In passing, just three neighbors, where really one, one neighbor, uh, that person that died.
When you say in the past, what does that mean?
In passing, in passing.
Oh, okay, in passing, I'm sorry.
Really, really just, really just one neighbor, really, to be honest.
So you did say you that you was going to, to request an address change, so that address would be, rather than Moreland Drive, it gonna be?
Edie Nixon.
Edie Nixon.
Yes, sir, yes. So the car lot is there. Look at the map, it's, it's there. Uh, it would affect those neighbors, which is already two houses on the street, to be honest, that are really occupied.
Now, I, I remember that you, you said that you was gonna run that priv, what you, what you done, because I've been down through that. But you ran that privacy fence to separate that property from Moreland Drive. So basically, folks be coming in off of Edie Nixon.
Yes, I spent about six thousand dollars, six thousand dollars over there, just that one piece of property, getting trees. Uh, there was a very, uh, blighted area over there. So I even bought a lot of attention and attracting, uh, to that area. And I continue to plan to try to help, uh, be a part of some positive when it come down to economic development, not moving my business nowhere else.
Mr. Smith, what, uh, the, the objection, is that twenty, twenty-four comprehensive plan? Uh, yes, sir. Um, it, it was the same, um, objection that we had the last time. Um, whereas, you know, this is, it is a residential street, and nothing against Mr. Boyd, he, he does operate a, a very outstanding business, um, over there on West Fairview Avenue. Um, but this was a location that, based on the comp plan, that it was for, in particular, ne- neighborhood, traditional neighborhood, only single-family residential. Um, however, I, I will say that, um, based on the way he wants to position it to, um, Edie Nixon, that, that may be okay. Um, but to, to turn it in towards Moreland, um, would, would, would basically be, um, not necessarily okay. But it, I, I, I would leave that up to you all to make the decision.
And I don't know if you know or not, Mr. Smith, the, the property that, if he was to turn that property toward, uh, Edie Nixon, the property that was directly in front of it, that's commercial property already.
Yeah, every, every, I mean, that's basically where he is right now. He op, he operates the, uh, the, what is it, BMN Inc., uh, right there on West Fairview that, that fronts, um, West Fairview Avenue.
And the property used to be a daycare center there years ago before I took over. So it was already had somewhat, uh, commercial zoning already.
Mr. Boyd, how many of those houses are those lots, I'll say? Just to the, I'm gonna call it to the right, looking at the plat that we're looking at?
Yes.
How many of those are vacant?
Oh, really, one.
Just one?
Yes.
And the other two are occupied?
No, the, the one that adjacent to that property, the owner stays in Florida, but I ha, may have future, uh, agreement that she may sell me that purch, that property. It's where it's just there.
It's vacant then, right?
It's, it's where the lights are on. No one stays.
Yeah, right.
The property's still up, up, up.
And we understand that smart.
Yes, okay. So next to that house, it's an abandon, it's an abandoned building. It just, it needed to be demolished.
Okay.
Plan on working on that.
And that's what you're trying to, to, to purchase?
Yes.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Yes.
And you mentioned a, a fence. How tall would the fence, the, did you mention privacy fence?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be within the guidelines of City ordinance code. It would be within the guidelines. And I think it was eight feet from the back to the side, but four in the front.
So you think it's eight feet? Alright, is it eight feet?
You can go up to eight.
It's eight feet, yes.
And four in the front.
Yes.
And I went by and looked at it, and I think it's, I think it's about eight feet. I went by and took a look. Uh, 'cause the fence is already up.
Okay, okay.
Any further questions from the planning commission? Anything from the audience?
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, my name is Pastor Thomas Ryan, pastor in that area. Uh, I've known Mr. Boyd a while, and he's serviced that community for a long time. I'm asking you, uh, to give him a chance to further the ec, the economic development of that area. Uh, that's one thing that we have targeted. Um, he's done a good job up to now. Uh, and I ask for your vote of approval and give him a chance to continue, uh, to serve the people in that area, even on a greater scale. Thank you.
Sir, sir, do you live over there? Do you, do you live near there?
I do, sir.
Where, where do you live?
I live in eleven oh two Bellevue Street, Montgomery, Alabama. That's three six one oh four. That's down near, uh, right in the back of Edie Nixon, or the school. And the church is right by Carver High School.
Pastor Chad Richardson, um, I think, um...
What, what's your address as well?
Oh, twenty-one twelve Young Farm Place, Montgomery, Alabama, three six one zero six. Uh, I, I think, uh, the question tonight is not why, um, he should, um, do this, but the real question is why not? But it's the same business that has been in that community for years, and is moving to the, the property that is, uh, less than a few feet away. So, um, I, I think that the present, uh, location and, and the presence of, of this is good for West Montgomery, and having something constructive and positive that brings back economic stability to a community that has been ravished with violence.
And I didn't, I didn't ask for a package store. Not a, I, I rode right around the corner next to my, my, my first cousin's house. They have, they have, uh, they have a funeral home in Red Press. And next door is where my cousin resides. Next door to a funeral home, I'm not asking for a funeral home. I'm not asking for a restaurant. I'm not asking for a night bar. I'm only asking for a promotion to, so I can beautify, so I can pour more into an area where I consider a home that I have been there for over thirteen years at that location. But I have business next door to Carver. I have a Cito company down there, along with the church. So there's, there's several, uh, uh, economic projects that I have been, been working on. So I just hope and ask that this board approve and give me the opportunity to expand the vision, uh, something that we, uh, very lack of over in that area, and that's economic development.
Are you willing to, you want it to be a, for, uh, a car lot? Is that, is that like what you've got on the front?
Yeah, so, so the real reason, I can't do what I want to do with the property that I'm leasing. For our promise that they was going to sell me the property, so they reneged on the deal. So now I want, I can't beautify what, what they want to allow me to do. So I want to purchase the property behind me so I can lay out the vision and make it all that it could possible be where that community would say, hey, he, he stayed the course. He, he completed the task, because I promised that I will always be a part when it come down to economic development, not speaking. So I'm putting my money up, and I have put my money up, and I'm asking this board to allow an entrepreneur to, to expand the vision of entrepreneurship.
But it's gonna be, what you have on the front, the front lot to this, is still gonna be a, uh, a car lot?
Yes.
For, for cars, okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we were, we were, we were together on that, okay.
Have you already bought that lot?
Almost two years ago, yes, sir.
Alright.
Any further questions, planning commission?
I know that last time, the people who lived on Moreland were very adamant about being against this. I don't know why they're not here this time.
We talked about present now. They, it was, it was, it only three homeowners that stay on there. It's got six houses on the street. And I will admit that it was a personal, it was a personal conversation that being one of the owners, we had a disagreement in the past, and to pay me back, they came out, but they are not here today. So, so I was told that they wasn't covered, and that they are not here. So I'm assuming that they decided to, to move on.
Anything further from the planning commission?
Will you agree that, that it's just gonna be a car lot?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Since we've had such disagreements in the past?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Car lot all the way, yes, sir.
So we can queue it strictly as a, as a car lot?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
I would agree to, uh, recommend that it be approved, subject to it being a car lot.
Only.
The new one?
Yeah, only.
Only, yeah, well, yeah, only, yeah.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion from the planning commission? Anything further from the audience? I believe a motion's in order?
Mr. Chair, I'd, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make the motion with you. No motion wasn't made unless the chair called for a motion to be made. So I'm gonna make the motion that, uh, we approve this with a queue as a car lot, and also that the address becomes Edie Nixon and not Moreland. So as long as, so I definitely want a queue on there that it's Edie Nixon address and not, not, uh, Moreland.
Motion's been made to approve with a queue of a car lot only, and that the addresses be changed to Edie Nixon. Is there a second?
I'll second the second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand.
It's only four.
So it's a no vote? I mean, it's not anything?
That's correct, no action.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have item number eight, um, request recommendation for approval of a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, section ten fourteen dash two of SMART code, article five, section five point six two A.
Um, just for clarification, there is a slight Scrivener's error there. It's five point six two B. So all the wording is correct, but the A should be a B. Um, the reason this has come up is we were contacted by someone who is interested in purchasing a twelve-story building in downtown. Um, they were having issues with financing and insurance because if that building was completely destroyed, they would have to rebuild the new building according to the SMART code, which would limit them to ten stories, um, unless they applied for variances. Um, it struck me that this was something that was possibly overlooked when SMART code was introduced. Um, so basically, what this amended wording says, that if a structure over ten stories in height within the T five that existed prior to the adoption of SMART code, it may be rebuilt or restored with existing non-conformities if it is destroyed by accidental fire, an act of God, or other unforeseen circumstances. This would only affect five or six buildings in the T five downtown area. I believe this is necessary to assist potential purchasers with redevelopment proposals for buildings that are over ten stories. Um, and the intent is not to allow someone to buy a twelve-story building and deliberately demolish it to, um, redevelop the site. Um, they would then be stuck to the requirements of SMART code. This is only for those buildings that in the extreme case, they were completely destroyed accidentally by fire or some act, that they would be allowed to put it back to the, to the height that it originally existed at. So I believe this is, this is necessary, um, because this was potentially overlooked when SMART code was introduced. It will encourage, hopefully, redevelopment of these larger buildings downtown, and it will assist with the purchase of these buildings for that redevelopment.
Any questions from the planning commission?
Are SMART codes developed by city?
A private consultant, I believe, was brought in.
So, so there's no standard SMART codes for cities? I'm just surprised. We've been talking SMART codes, been on this commission for a long time, and we're just coming up to this overlooking now?
To, to be honest with you, I've noted several things in there that, that have been overlooked, which I would like to try and address. Um, you know, even if you look at the, you know, as you go through it and you see things that crop up, um, I believe what happened was possibly SMART code from somewhere else was used. Um, not word for word, but I believe one from somewhere else was brought and... used, um, not word for word, but I believe one from somewhere else was brought and adapted for the city. But there are, there are issues with it that I have noted. This one is of particular concern, because we have someone who wants to redevelop a 12-story building, they want to purchase it, but the question was raised, um, both for financing purposes and insurance purposes. If the building was completely destroyed, then they could only put 10 stories back. They could ask for a variance, but there's no guarantee the variance would be, would be given. And again, this is not if someone deliberately tears down a building.
Well, I understand, I understand all of that, but I'm just... I'm concerned, what do we have with this SMART code? If we have to have a variance shortly after we put it into effect, or we have to change it after we put it into effect, did we not choose the right person the first time?
I don't know.
To do the SMART code?
It was adopted in 2006, so...
I know, I was here then.
Yeah, so it's been here for 17 years.
Yeah, okay.
18 years.
Well, for one, I'm glad you're looking for the details out of it, and I think that's a, a great, uh, I, I agree with your, your thought pattern, so...
I appreciate it, yeah.
I do, very much.
Any further questions from the planning commission? Anything from the gallery? Motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed?
Thank you.
It's approved. Meeting's adjourned.